Good to see everyone. Good to be back. Today is our March business meeting on the 23rd of March for the school district. We've got four board members with us. Joe Katrin is traveling for work this week and so he will not be with us. I don't believe he's online with us. So there's four of us in cabinet and we have some audience with us today, so welcome everybody. We're glad you're here. Got a full agenda, so let's get started. Let's start off with the district highlights. I'll turn it over to Superintendent McKay.
All right, there are things that happened during the course of a school year that are definitely worthy of celebration. And it just happens that a lot of them happened just in a very short period of time. So let me kind of go through and and recognize some things that have taken place in the school district and these all happen to be really at the high school level, but again worthy of recognition. We had a young man, a student at Seela High School by the name of Charlie Hudson. Charlie was the 50-meter freestyle state champion in swimming. Quite an accomplishment for Charlie. He and the coach are the only two state champions in school history. So congratulations to Charlie and job well done representing the high school and the community of Seela. The next one is our lady bikes basketball team was named academic state champions for the entire state for all two A girls basketball programs. There is only one academic state champion and our lady bikes are the one. They had a cumulative grade point average of 3.92, which is pretty darn impressive. And there's no doubt why they are the academic state champions. So congratulation to to all of the ladies and the staff as well. Not to be outdone by our girls basketball team, but our dance team. Our dance team was also recognized as academic state champions with a combined grade point average of 3.76. It just happens also they got accolades not only for their academic performance, but they also received a third place in state in hip hop competition and were first place at state in the Palm competition. So all in all, great work by them. Our high school band and choir and wind ensemble needs some recognition as well. They had a terrific week and received some superior ratings and superior ratings are just not handed out to anyone. So it does show some terrific work by the students. Our concert band received a superior rating at a competition. Our wind ensemble performers earned a superior plus rating. So yeah, pretty impressive. This was the highest placing finish ever at this festival according to director Kevin Mattson. So something definitely to celebrate and all at the same time, our choir students also received a superior rating. So like I said, lots of great things to celebrate, not only in athletics, but in our fine arts program. And last but not least, we have a program at the high school involving Life Smart. It is a team competition and they were recognized as state champions, correct over there? Yeah, and they are on their way to the national competition, I believe in Cincinnati. Is that correct? So congratulations to the members of that team. So as I said, quite a last few months of success for our students and definitely for the high school and the entire district and community. So definitely worthy of highlights.
A great celebration for multiple groups and individuals. And like you said, that's a nice spread of academics and athletics and fine arts and you know, Seela's we all know that Seela is a great place to be, but that's the kind of thing that congratulations to everybody. Thank you very much for sharing. Let's give them a round of applause. Love it. Next, we'll move on to district comments from the audience. And so before we ask if there are any, I would like to acknowledge that we have received two letters from patrons in the community that we have in our hands. All board members have a copy of that and certainly will and have read through these from our patrons here and we appreciate the time that they spent and the advocacy that they have for their comments. We won't read them out loud, but we will definitely record them in today's meeting so that we have So I would then open it up to anyone else in the room that would like to make comments. This is your time to do that. Okay, we have no one there though, so we will move on. Next up is meeting minutes from the last meeting. This was from our February 23rd meeting. We did not have a meeting in March 9th. So we have one set of meeting minutes here. We've had a chance to read through those, so we need to approve those in a meeting minutes from the 23rd. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve them. I've read them and questions about them? All right, we'll vote. All those in favor indicate with an eye. All right, moving on to number five. It's our consent agenda. Several items here. First one is our HR action sheet. So I'll ask Chris if we'd like to make comments here.
A lot of work for ARL.
I do want to just take the time to point out, and I know there'll be time in the future here. All of the retirements are a reason for celebration, but there are certain people that I think all of us know that really given an entire career to the district and you will see one on the bottom there that many of you know very well. I too know her as well personally and Michelle McCartney has decided to announce her retirement and you have us all to thank her at multiple times, all the work that she has done to support the high school and all the thousands of students that she has interacted with over the years.
Body's the Viking Way and Viking Integrity and she's a wonderful lady. All right, thank you. ARL Goods and Services? Great. Might be worth pointing to, pointing out to anyone listening or watching later that you see those expenses and the expenditures and the things that the district purchases on behalf of the district and student achievement and that kind of thing, but a number of things that the district gets provided by grant money. And this is a matter of somebody in the district writing the grant application and securing that funds. So it's not coming out of our general fund or taxpayer money. It's grant money. So that's over and above. So there's a significant percentage of things that happen in our
Give a shout out to somebody in the audience here. We do have Jeff Cochrane here and he writes several grants for the school district. In fact, for the CTE program last year, he was able to secure over $400,000 in grants. And this year is up to 340. So kudos to kudos to Jeff for that.
Well, thank you. And number D in, or letter D in the consent agenda is a number of second readings for policies. There's five of them here. So this is the second reading. I was not in attendance for the first reading. Any background or anything additional or can we just go ahead or how do you feel about that?
I think you can go ahead. I've heard no concerns over the course of the month about that. And so with that being said, we'll move forward with those. That would be my recommendation.
All right, we'll go one by one. Can we do a group?
You can do them group as one item D.
Okay, one item D. There's five policies here. Second reading. We've had a chance to look at them before we go any further. Just open the floor for anyone that has any of these before we take formal action. Okay, with that in mind, then I would entertain a motion to adopt these five policies.
I move we approve the five policies outlined in the same item D.
Thanks, Jamie. Have a motion. One last thing, comments. I will vote. All those in favor, please indicate with an eye.
All right.
Opposed? Okay, thanks for that one. I guess that's part of the consent agenda.
No, but it double.
Yeah, all right. So we'll move on to number E or letter E. There's two donations in here. One is from our senior parents from the class of 22, which is an amazing donation of five, over $5,000 to be used for flexible seating at our high school. And my understanding is that's been a need and it's just not, it's just still a need. And so they're helping us make that happen. Thank you to Gina Franklin and the senior parent booster class of 2022. We will definitely put that use and use it as second donation is from Life Smart. And because we have a national team going on behalf of Seela, Life Smart has donated $1,000 to help support that trip and competition. Natalie, who is one of our student reps is part of that team. So congratulations. All right, number, letter F is a resolution then to transfer funds. So I'll turn this over to Chris.
Placed the middle school and high school and we had a lot more costs associated with the older end. Over time, a few years ago, the board made the final decision to to actually drop that transfer from 800,000 to 400,000. So for the last eight years-ish, we've been recommending to the board to authorize a $400,000 transfer. And so we still have costs that come up every year and we have projects that we discuss over time. And we say, okay, it's time to do that project. And so this, we're recommending tonight that you authorize this one-time transfer for this school year in the amount of 400,000 from general funding cap project.
Questions for anybody? I would just ask, I know Frank comes and talks to us about the facilities and you've mentioned, you know, short and long range plans and some of those things. We've had the opportunity to see the list, if you will. And I know that list never goes away totally. An ongoing, ongoing thing. And an additional and an annual thing that we do to keep our schools nice and up and maintain the way we'd like.
Most recently, the last couple of years, two, three years, we've been putting money aside out of that fund for the high school to repaint classrooms, re-carpet classrooms, just to keep that building up because we know that that's one of our, that is our oldest facility now and we want to make it look nice and feel right for students and staff. So that's been most recently high priority. Coming up this summer, we'll be doing additional smaller projects within the high school to accommodate more classrooms. Where our student population in that school is very large and it continues to grow. So we're looking for being creative in our thinking about classroom spaces. So we'll be spending a little bit more money on that.
Yeah, the comments or questions for anyone? Right, we need a motion then to transfer to approve this resolution to 2023-1. Do the whole thing. Okay, yep, you're right. Go on then to letter G. We have three overnight or travel requests. One is DECA, three students to nationals in Orlando. Congratulations to those students and good luck. Casey Benjamin is the advisor there and he does a great job with our DECA program. Life Smart National Travel Request is here. Natalie and I neglected to mention any of these names. And the third one is a safety training in Bozeman and there are four staff members going there. That one, by the way, is being paid for by a grant. So now I think we're done, down to the bottom. All right, there we go. End of the consent agenda. Now we can approve the consent agenda. We have a motion.
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
All those in favor, please indicate with an eye. Opposed? Okay. Oh, there's a lot in there. I'm kind of tired right now. Can we take a break? No, we're not going to take a break because now we get into some fun stuff and these are annual reports. We have two of them tonight. And our first one is our nutrition department and I'm telling you what, I have three grandkids in the district who eat school lunch every day and they talk about how good the food is. Their favorite is, their favorite is cheese zombies and pizza, I believe. Does that surprise anybody? But anyway, we have Lori Ozanich with us and we're very happy to have you here and
Good to see everyone again. Let's go ahead and jump right in. So let's talk about the highlight reel from last year. Really the theme for nutrition services is the new normal. So we know that we came back to school. We have a different acronym that we follow, but really the concept is the same. How do we feed our students breakfast and lunch? We did this under what's called the SSO program, which really gave us the maximum reimbursement for us to be able to serve all of our kids for free again. What OSPI did do though is say, okay, we're at school now and so we will be, the expectations are that we will provide meal service out of the school. So there's no longer the ability to take meals home as we had in the past. So USDA had also installed some meal flexibilities to help us be able to do our job. And those meal flexibilities expired again, kind of back to what we knew prior to COVID. Here's a comparison. It's kind of hard, really. It's not really comparing apples to apples. If you can see, this is our breakfast and lunch program. Again, you do see different acronyms. So 2021, we were serving the community and so it's really hard to compare those two years together. But SSO program, we were back in the school. I'll talk a little bit more about kind of how this year compares to last year a little bit later on. We also provided a summer meals program and so we were back to a traditional summer program. Prior to that, in the previous summer, we were still doing meal packs for our community. So you can see a big difference between the number of meals that we served largely in part to what we did back in 2021. Continued challenges. So food supply chain and staffing, that is something that we were really trying to manage. Again, that was definitely an issue last year. I do see that food supply chain issue starting to get a lot better. Starting in this year and again, continued staffing, just to be able to serve all of the students we were serving with the staffing that we needed. Here's just some information that we provided to our community, just, you know, helping to communicate to them, asking them for their understanding on just our food shortages. We used to provide a month meal, kind of a snapshot in time. And we kind of scaled that back to a week at a time. That gave us greater flexibility if we were shorted on any of our deliveries and we held that into this year. We're still doing the same thing and I expect us to do that through this year. Hopefully we'll go back to a kind of a monthly view starting in the next school year. Couple of other highlights. We moved into our beautiful new central kitchen back in December. And we have amazing space. I have brought several different directors through and I'll have more coming through. And definitely, I've also had a chance to visit some other school districts and I'm very, very thankful of the space that we have to do the work that we want to do. And that really is focusing on a lot of scratch cooking for our kids and that requires space. So we definitely have the space and the equipment that we need. What came up at the end of last year is a new funding opportunity and that came through with HB 1878 and that passed at the state level and that was a little bit of a change. So CEP is Community Eligible Provision. And it, what that allowed is it really kind of changed to requiring schools who had a specific identified percentage and really they took a look at those students who were eligible for for, it could be SNAP benefits, it could be Medicaid, et cetera. And if they fell within a certain percentage, those school districts would become CEP eligible. Along with that, the state offered with that, those schools would receive the highest level of meal reimbursement. That reimbursement at the free rate and that was state supplemented. So wonderful. We found out that we were eligible. And what that means, starting this year is breakfast and lunch is at no charge daily for our students. The funding is for four years. So that's even more exciting. And it supports the SAP expansion really to meet the higher number of meals that we estimated to serve. And you know, when Chris and I were sitting down and she wanted me to, you know, what does that look like? What would that estimate? And, and I thought, well, gosh, I mean, let's just go ahead and let's just guess the same number of meals that we did this year. Well, earlier today, I took a look at where we're at to date this year compared to where we were last year at the same time period. And we have served 49,000 more lunches than what I thought we would. And I think breakfast is something like 7,000 more. So definitely more than I thought. And I really do see us continuing to serve more students. I'm thrilled that we have more students. We have a lot more students coming through at our middle school. That's a big change that we noticed this year and at our high school, I just got feedback today that lots of kids came through our second chance breakfast. So we had really high numbers today. So let's just see how that momentum happens to the rest of the school year. So we, it's hard not to talk a little bit about this year along with last year's summary. So a few things, and I do want to again shout out to Jeff Cochrane here. He was able to write a grant for us. It's a $10,000 grant for plant-based food and class, plant-based education for our students. So Jeff, I'm going to be getting into our schools. I'm working with a high school. I'm going to be going into some of our CTE classes, actually, working with Mrs. Morgan, I think, Ms. Morgan. Is that right? And so we'll be bringing in some plant-based food samples for kids. I'm going to bring a dietetic intern with me, talk a little bit about what we do as dieticians and then also incorporate some of that sampling. I'll also probably tap into our intermediate kids. I know Mrs. Quigley has reached out to me and I always have great taste testers. So we'll work with them and then hopefully do some taste testing at the middle school too. Two other hot topics for this year really is farm to school and scratch cooking. And so we, I'm always looking for how we can really participate, dig deeper into scratch cooking. And really, we are in the Mecca of fresh produce around us. So I really want to take advantage of that. So I'm working with, her name is Susan Wildy. We have another USDA mentor grant. She is a director that's had experience in the other side, in the east part of the state. And she's really assisted with identifying what our priorities are. Farm to school is one of those. So we're going to work together and see how we can get more in our schools. With that, I just want to thank you all for your continued support of our program.
Would you talk just briefly about the possibility of a fresh fruit and vegetable grant?
Yes, we have the opportunity to apply for a fresh fruit and vegetable grant starting next year. I think it's a great opportunity and we actually applied for this grant, I want to say before, maybe in 2018, 2019. I do think we did not qualify for it. They were looking at really high percentage of free and reduced districts. But I do think we have a chance this year to do that. So I think we're looking at our focus of K5 schools. If we can do that. So it'll give a chance to bring in fresh fruits and vegetables. There's also an education piece along with that in the classrooms. Hoping to get that on board.
Lori, what does staffing look like if we were to go back to the old normal five years ago versus now? Bottom line, I guess, what's it look like in that department for us?
Sure. I would say five years ago, our school district has always operated at a very high efficient level. Especially what we use is something that's called meals per labor hour. And so it really looks at the number of meals that we're producing and what our staffing hours are in every building. So with that said, we've always worked on the very upper level of that staffing. I think that's what's always helped our program be able to financially support ourselves. And that is definitely not this, what happens across the state. So with that said, what's happening now is with our increase of meals, obviously 49,000 more lunch meals. That provides more funding for us to get the staffing that we need to be able to serve all of our students. Some of that includes, we have more demands on delivery because we have more meals that we're bringing in. We've got an additional person in our central kitchen, for example.
We'll be looking at possible possible increases in, obviously in our revenues moving forward next year. Implementation of breakfast after the bell. We'll bring back more information about that. But that's definitely going to increase the counts at breakfast and help us get more students fed in the morning. As we know, when students eat, they, they learn a lot better. And so that's our goal is to, to try to get all students eating. Not all students are hungry. Not all students are hungry first thing in the morning. And so the intent is to offer an opportunity after the bell where students have the opportunity to eat a little bit later. And right now, we have a great program, Lori's mentioned, at the high school with Second Chance Breakfast, where they, if students don't eat first thing, they do get another opportunity, middle of the morning, to grab breakfast, which is, is very popular for students. And the parfaits today, as Lori mentioned, were, were very popular with kids. So anyway, yeah, well, more to come on that.
Lori, I've got just a couple of quick questions. Is our percent of free and reduced lunches flat or increasing or decreasing over the last, I don't know, three or four years? And I don't know if you know off the top of your head what that number is.
You know, for this year, I don't know what the numbers are. But I can tell you that over COVID and over the years, it has been steadily increasing. In fact, I was surprised, I think I saw a snapshot of what high school was this year. I want to say they crested over 50% free and reduced. During COVID, what they allowed us to do, and that's when I really saw the numbers a lot, a lot closer. They were wanting to be able to serve as many families as possible, especially during COVID. So they extended some eligibilities for that free and reduced percentage into more than just the current year. Usually, it's just a current year, and then families need to reapply. So in terms of this year, I'm not sure what that looks like.
And, oh, sorry, Chris. A different question.
Yes, our, our percentage over the last, just say, five years, we've gone to low 40s all the way up, fit on average, 55% over the last three-year average. So every year, numbers are continuing to increase. Next year will be the first year that our high school will be eligible for high poverty funds. They've now hit the mark over 50%. So all of our schools are eligible now for LAPH high poverty fund.
That was one of the all-up questions I had. The other question I had is there's a CEELA Food Bank going in.
I heard, yeah.
And is there any partnership between, to avoid food waste or anything between the school district and the CEELA Food Bank?
I can speak to that. We're actually working with a couple of members on the board from the Food Bank to bring a backpack program to CEELA, to be able to provide meals home with students in need. And we've had a couple of great meetings. Hunter System from our end is, is kind of taking the lead on that with our family support folks. And we are going to pilot the program at CEELA Intermediate School from, in May, for the month of May. And then moving into next school year, those students will be identified confidentially. And the Food Bank folks will come and stock, will have areas in the buildings for them to stock the bags that are, that can be on the shelf, they don't have to be refrigerated. They'll be distributed at the end of the day on Fridays, and those kids will be able to take those items home, and they'll have enough to eat, at least for the next day, two meals. So it's, it's a great thing. We're really excited about the partnership. Kevin's involved in that as well, and Alicia, and many of us. So we're looking forward to, to starting that program, well, pilot this year, start it up next year for all schools.
That's fantastic. Thank you.
I have a quick question financially. The CEP is a reimbursement program whereby it allows us to provide meals free. And I assume that, you know, we're buying food on the front end and then get reimbursed later. Does that even out? I mean, is there, is the reimbursement more than enough to cover the cost to make meals and distribute meals to our students?
It, it does. And in fact, this year, we have some supply chain assistance funding. This is additional funding that was offered. And we have what we're paying. I think all of us have seen that in the grocery store, the prices with inflation. So that type of additional funding has really helped out this year. And so I would say, yes, it has helped, even though our food costs have really gone up quite a bit.
Lori's done a tremendous job over the last few years keeping our labor lean. So we have enough to operate our schools, but we're not overstaffed. And therefore, our amount of money that we receive from the federal government and the small amount from state funds to cover costs of our program, were spot on and actually a little bit in the black each year, which has helped us buy additional equipment for the program. So as Lori mentioned, there's, aren't a lot of school districts that operate in the black for the nutrition programs. And CEELA is very fortunate to have Lori involved. She does a great job managing that.
Lori, thank you so much for your time and your preparation and for what you do for the district and the students in our district. Appreciate your work. While we're making that transition, though, Lori, before you go, I want to thank you and Jeff both for providing the deck for your presentations to us in our packets. We have a chance to look through them and, you know, be thinking about what you're going to bring to us. So we appreciate the advanced look at what you brought tonight. Next up is our Director of Future Learning, Jeff Cochrane, and an annual report. So we're happy to have you here, sir.
Well, I'm, I'm excited to be here, giving this annual report, not only on future learning, CTE, but also on choice programs. I'll be talking a little bit about that. I'm hoping that I can make this quick so we can all get to the Zags game. But, and some of you, or maybe I will. Some of you were able to see some of this yesterday. So I hope I'll share some additional data with you. But certainly welcome any questions as we go as well. But I'll have a couple of slides at the end for questions. So Future Ready doesn't just involve CTE. It involves, it's really become a K-12 effort in our district. And our mission is really all students prepared for their future. Really focused on kid-first, focused on helping align what student interests are with our abilities, with our staff, as well as kind of requirements from OSBI and other things like that. In front of you, you see these career trees. If you were able to go to our day on the 25th with, with Mark Perna, he talked a lot about these being a catalyst to help students recognize different, different avenues or different careers within and beyond the, the school. So we've gone all in on really believing that pathways are not just a, it's not college or career. It's every kid's going to have a career. And that everywhere, those, those careers, some of them are college, some of them are just tech school, trade school, technical schools. Some of them are just straight entry level, kind of right beyond high school. But what matters is that it's the student choosing that pathway for themselves. It's focused on what they are interested in. So that's our mission. That's where we start. How do we do it? You know, we, we, this year is our first year. We started based on surveys of staff and students. We recognized that our ninth graders weren't adequately informed about the things that we were offering. Our ninth graders weren't adequately prepared to access things in high school, social, emotional, relational. Things weren't going as well as we would like. And we know that ninth grade is, is a, is an essential year for students in terms of our graduation rate, but really beyond, right? Helping our students move beyond high school. We also have graduation launch, which, you know, you learned, well, you probably already knew, but Michelle McCartney is retiring, and she's a key catalyst in our graduation launch. So that's a class where, you know, if you, if you read, if you listen to social media, all the parents are out there going, well, why don't we teach finance? And why don't we teach, you know, people how to, how to fill out a application for a, you know, a car, or how to read a lease? They do things like that. We do that. So she's been a catalyst in that. We've been doing that now. We brought it back really two to three years ago. And that's been an important piece of what we're doing in CTE. We have phenomenal counseling department, not only at the high school, but also middle school, starting to really buy into our pathways process. But really, what we're starting to do with the entire counseling team, K-12, is how do we align our career trees in every single grade levels? That students are getting familiarized with different levels of careers. It's not just kind of the big five. It's all these different types of careers within the pathways that we offer. And then, of course, our CTE program, I'm going to show you some data that I'm hoping will blow your mind a little bit. But we are absolutely dominating our region in, in our CTE numbers. And that's due in large part to believing that, that CTE unlocks passion and purpose for our students. And then with, with choice programs, kind of me taking that over this year, it's, it's been a transition. But choice programs, I think, is going to play a huge role in how we move forward with things. And I'll talk about that here at the end. So I talked about this already a little bit, but really pathways, we believe it's not something that is just, it ends when, when you end your, your, when you graduate high school, when you end your experience with us. It's really about moving beyond the borders of the classroom. And I think that's a big part of how choice is going to play a role. Internships, externships, jobs, job shadows, things like that. But this is a core belief that we have, and we've been fortunate to have a staff that also believes this and is following this in a true way. So those of you who are, you were here yesterday, or maybe you watched, these are our current pathways. But I have an announcement. So these, these are fresh, you're the first people to see these today. These were just made today. We're splitting a pathway. So we believe that our pathways, students vote with their feet. And we grow, and how we grow is based on student need and student demand. And our marketing and hospitality pathway has been growing for the past two years. And we're fortunate now to have a business, an additional business job posted. So we'll be moving from one business teacher to two. And then our hospitality pathway with our culinary program has been growing every single year. I mean, we have to, honestly, we have to turn students away because we don't have the right physical space for it, right? We don't have a large enough space to, to house the demand that we have for that, which is, it's a good problem to have, but it's a problem, right? So these are hot off the press, are two brand-new pathways for next year as we grow. So I'm a firm believer, you'll hear me say this a lot, that, that we're standards firm, we're standards first, and then we're CTE is modality flexible. So we, we will change how we teach that math class. You know, we're, next year, we're bringing in an applied geometry class because we're seeing students are struggling with the traditional geometry where you're kind of doing a book and pencil, right? So we're bringing in some more applied-type classes. And that's what CTE does. But the important part is that we start with standards. It's not something that we dumb the content down. It's not kind of like what I, I was, I was presenting to middle school, to middle school students today. And I said, it's not your, your grandpa's wood shop, right? It's not like you're just going in for a one-off class. These are classes that build upon each other, right? And are based upon standards that we have to hit. So where are we? We're experiencing a massive, massive growth in CEELA. And we are, our total CTE FD is above every regional district. Any regional partner in our ESD, we have numbers way above them. And I think this is because we work so hard on engaging our students. And what we're doing is really, I would say, it's anecdotal, but I would say it's working on keeping our FTE here as well, keeping our students in CEELA. We're not experiencing the loss that we might, that other districts are experiencing post-COVID. We've gained all that back. And I think it's because we're giving students a better experience.
Jeff, would you say that our larger number is, I guess, if you're looking at supply or demand? We cause the supply and that's bringing the students in? Or are we working off the demand of some of the students and getting them to work so well to bring those numbers up?
I'd say it's a push-pull. It's a little of both. What we do is, you know, we, we allow, when we register, we allow students to register for whatever they want. And then we've been fortunate to be able to hire positions to fit that demand. And so that's really where we start. But part of CTE is we also have to have our, we have to have the demand of the industry. So we have to actually have, you know, we can't just bring in a basket weaving class. There has to be a demand for that job and that career in our community. And so we have that demand, too. So we bring both of those in, as well as the skill set of our teachers, right? So really, really great question. But our, our primary focus is going to be first on what kids want. And then obviously, what we can do.
Follow up to that, though, is you mentioned reacting to what industries want. And so, you explained a little of this last night, but how do you, how do you find that out? You know, so how do we know what industry is looking?
Yeah, so part of that, we, in, in, in our region, we operate regionally. So we have a regional advisory board, and we have businesses who come in that are invited to that, to advise us per program area. So each pathway is essentially its own program area. And they then work with professionals in those fields to determine curriculum, to determine equipment, to determine kind of what's next in the grand scheme of those courses. So whenever we want to bring a new course to students, we really go to advisory board first. Hey, is this in-demand enough? Health sciences is, is one of the most in-demand fields right now in our region. And so, gosh, and since I've been here, we had 0.7 of a health science teacher when I started. Now we have three full times and, and a demand for more. I mean, we're, we're growing in that regard. But when we meet at a regional level, we, we split off into our, into our areas. Health science is a good example. You know, they have multiple doctors, nurses, other people in that industry that come and advise them on, you know, what are the numbers? What are you seeing? You know, it could be as simple as, hey, what are you seeing from your entry-level employees that we could help you with? Right? And that's a question I love to ask. And it's, it's always, they always talk about soft skills. And you heard me talk about it yesterday. I hate it, I hate it being called soft skills because that diminishes the importance, because they're so important. We need to be teaching them. I like to call them future-ready skills or professional skills. Answer your question, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I mean, just to clarify, though, these advisory boards, there's one for each one of the pathways made up of experts in those particular.
Yes, and, and, and a piece of that, too, is CTE teachers, they have requirements that are placed above kind of your typical, like an English teacher, like I was. They have to have an advisory board as required by OSPI. They have to run a career and technical service organization, basically a club, FCCLA, which does Life Smarts or DECA, which, by the way, Natalie's going to Nationals in DECA, too, right? Yeah, like, amazing. And so, you know, it, it's, it's a, it, it's a, it's a lot of, a lot of work, but it's the right work, right? It's understanding what we need from our community and our, in our local businesses. And local could be statewide, too, especially with computer science. Our demands are different in Yakima than they are in the state, right? And so, you know, we, we try to get our data. We work really closely with, you know, Chamber of Commerce and things like that, Yakima. And they're all coming to our regional advisory councils. And, and we work really closely, closely with them to see what the demands are. So that's the number. So 37.83% of our students are voting with their feet in our high school. That, that's the percent of students in, in our high school who are taking CTE classes, which is, here's the, here's the data there. You can see, I mean, we, we have a lot of students experiencing this. And one of the, one of the things that, you know, when I talk to colleagues in other areas, it's, it's usually an either-or with like college and the high school or CTE. But so many of our classes that are CTE are also college and high school. In fact, we have more CT college and high school classes in other contexts. Now, part of that's because we just have so many CT classes, right? And so it's a, you know, it's a numbers game. But one of the goals that we have in, in the CTE department is to add at least one college and high school per program area every single year. So that means every single pathway is adding or working on adding, right? At college and high school class every single year. So it's not, it's not like college or CTE. It's, yes, you're getting both, which is, that's unique to us. That is not something that other districts are really focusing on. And it, I'd, I'd love to take credit for that, but we have an amazing staff, right? So our staff really believe in that. And it's, and it's a belief that's not just held with CTE staff. I mean, we had English teachers asking, hey, I'd like to become CTE. Here's a college and the high school class. What do you think about making this a CTE class? I mean, it's people in, in the, in the buildings, both middle and high school are, are asking for this, and they're excited about this. Some data on where we were when I started. I don't, I mean, I could go all the way back, but our numbers have increased exponentially. The big jump between 2021 to 2022, you know, that's, that's actually this school year, that jump there. That's due in large part, we added CTE back to the middle school. So the middle school CTE went away for a lot of years. And to, to the detriment, I think, to, to our programs. Students weren't getting an opportunity to explore courses. But now, I was just going over the numbers with, with Paul Hudson right before this. And Um, but now I I was just going over the numbers with with Paul Hudson right before this, and you know, we're seeing photography. Right? Super simple class to teach. Kids love it, but what it does is it leads them to a multitude of career paths, I mean, you you look at the the explosion of Instagram and the idea that people can be influencers as a career is was foreign, was still foreign to me, it's kind of weird. Um, but but it's a real career, and if we can give students skills now where they're learning to take better pictures, frame their pictures better. You know, get taught by real industry professionals, I mean, getting real skills at middle school. What will they be able to do once they reach that, you know, finish that pathway as as a senior? So um, that's the big jump there, we're anticipating another another jump, um, a a small jump. Colton looked at this, he's like, oh, we've plateaued. We we, what can we do, we got, we we've plateaued, you know, the competitive nature in Colton. Um, but we haven't, it's just that those those jumps there have been so large. We were at one eighty-two uh, when I, when I started and gosh, we're over, we're over six hundred total now. Or we'll we'll be over six hundred next year.
Well, and where you go on, I mentioned, I think you mentioned last night that in the middle school now, when a, when a middle school student selects their elective classes, that there's a, there's a little note. There's a pathway mentioned on that particular, so if they have interest in one of the pathways, it's gonna show up in their elective choice at the middle school.
Yes, absolutely, in fact, I was, I presented to four different classes at the middle school today. And all about pathways and how their current middle school classes are connected to pathways that move be, not just move to the high school, but move beyond that. Right? Move to Perry Tech, move to Central, you, whatever school they're interested in. Or straight to the workforce, right? Any of those, I was talking to them about those options that they have. Um, and you know, the excitement that kids are starting to have about, oh my gosh, I didn't realize I could learn math through construction. You know, these are students who, I mean, according to the teacher, really struggle in math. Well, great, let's try it in a different way, maybe it's not the math that you're struggling with, maybe it's the modality. Right? And so we give students the options to do that, which is really, to me, that's, that's the best part, that's the most exciting part. Dan, I put this in for you. Yeah, yeah, so uh, we also, one of the big pushes beyond, you know, college and the high school is giving kids certifications that are professional level certifications. Um, you know, the one that I think we're we're best at is is, gosh, First Aid CPR. I mean, that's, that's a simple one, but we're now doing that not just in health sciences, but we've also certified. Uh, we we have trainers now in our early childhood ed pathway. Um, and they they also go to the engineering and manufacturing pathway for for some of those students. Um, I'm not going to read all these to you, but our a goal is to add one of those every year as well. Um, until we run out of certifications to give. So in your packets, you don't need to necessarily read it now, but you have uh, some documents about our pathways with the courses that we offer there. Um, you also have uh, individual copies of all the career trees. Something that I didn't mention, um, you can see there on the end, you know, and this is something that I highlight every time I can, because I think it's important. We're the only school district in the country that translates their career trees into Spanish. Um, you know, and and the other piece, the other piece too is that dual language at the middle and high school is going to run through CTE. So um, not only is our students in dual language going to get uh core instruction in Spanish, but they'll also get electives through through CTE in Spanish. Um, we're doing that now with the, we call it medical detectives, it's in the health sciences pathway. Um, we're doing it in design and modeling, which is in the engineering and manufacturing pathway. We're doing it in, oh gosh, there's an apps creator, which is a computer science pathway class, so those are all taught in seventh grade dual language right now. Um, so CT classes also taught in Spanish.
So the magnitude of that, Jeff, if you were to rewind, I don't know why I would say, go back a little bit. Magnitude of like dual language, magnitude of college in the classroom over, you know, on a YTC and doing something different. And then the magnitude of CTE, and you're going to combine all those, and the student theory can make it through that pathway. That's incredible.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Thank you. I, it it really is, and it's unique, I mean, it's uh like I said, fortunate to have a great staff, um, that they're, they buy into what they want to do. Uh, or what we want to do, uh, we set the goals together. But also, uh, you know, we've got the the leadership that's supporting it, and I think that's a big part of why this is working, right? I think we all believe in the work.
Well, and what I think that I didn't understand until last night was that my little simple brain was, okay, I'm going to pick a pathway, and then that's my course, but you cleared that up last yesterday, that students can choose multiple pathways. And you coined it as a, this is cheap and free exploring.
Oh, yeah.
And um, I love that idea because the concept of doing it while you're in middle slash high school under the public school system versus paying tuition at the college to explore and figure out what you want to do in life. Let's figure it out here where they can explore different pathways and figure out a little better what their direction might be.
A- absolutely, and and a lot of the pathways, they they work really well concurrently, right? I mean, if you talk egg science and engineering, manufacturing. I mean, if you're going into, maybe you're going into an egg field. You also need to know how manufacturing works and how the process works. Or even engineering, manufacturing, and computer science, like at Treetop, that's all computer science, robotics, automation. Right? And that's manufacturing, engineering, but also that computer science side, right? So so things, they're they're complimentary, um, which I think, eh, gosh, it it just enhances everything that we can do for students. And what we're seeing now, uh, according to counseling, is we're seeing, you know, students graduating with two or three different pathways. Um, and sometimes by accident, just because they're like, oh my gosh, I want to take this class, I want to take child psychology, but maybe I'm in health science field, that's what I want to do. And then, wow, I really like child psychology, and so I want to take a few more of the classes within that sequence. And and something could be said too about, you know, we're building the plane as we're flying it. And uh, one of the reasons why I want to kind of circle back to that reason we put in um, high school launch is we were recognizing and talking kind of exit surveys, just talking anecdotally with students, we were noticing that a lot of students didn't know, oh, I'm in egg science, right? They didn't, they didn't define themselves by that, which is okay. Um, because it was a lot of the exploration, it was a class here, class there. But what we're seeing now was with with especially some of our freshmen and sophomore students, is they're more aware and in tune with I'm in this pathway, and here's what I'm going to do with it. Right? And so they're able to identify, oh my gosh, I've maybe seen this, and I I want to do that career, and they can point to it, and they know what that might be. And and really, that's not only that high school launch class, but also teachers playing a a more uh, being much more intentional about how they talk about things and how they um, connect it to the real world.
Uh, Jeff, could you talk, but first of all, I I just want to commend you for this presentation and for last night's presentation. I I think this is something that addresses the skills gap that people have been talking about for a long time. And it seems like the you talked about parents online saying, why aren't we teaching this kind of stuff? That that's been a demand from communities, uh, lots of communities in Sealand, I think in particular. I'd love to see us to continue to get the word out about this, to, you know, get it in the newspaper and get it on TV and get it on our Facebook page. It just seems like this really is responsive to what the community and industry needs. Could could you talk a little bit about the intern apprenticeship coordinator position that's new at the high school?
Yeah, so uh, this will bleed a little bit into the choice programs piece. How so that there there's two elements, I think there's the uh, the promotional piece, uh, which I would say that is a is a flaw of mine, so busy doing the work, I'm not talking about the work as much as I want to be. Right? And things like this, really, uh, Colt and I were talking afterwards, this is what kind of fills our bucket, because we're like, oh my gosh, look at all the stuff we've actually done. Sometimes when you're in the work, it doesn't feel like that. Um, but the 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 cross-section or where things intersect with choice and pathways, I think is, part of this is the business and internship coordinator position. So uh, one of the changes we're making to choice programs or what we used to call alternative programs, I'll talk about why we changed the name in a minute. Um, but a change we're making is to bring on a business and internship coordinator to help get students aligned with careers, jobs, internships outside. Um, but not only do that, but train them before we send them out. Right? Because if we don't do it right, if we're just sending students out, hey, we've got you an internship, go do it. We know how that might go, uh, things, we might burn relationships, we might kids might not have a good experience, businesses might not have a good experience. And so part of this position will be training and and teaching the students, hey, here's how we act in a professional manner. Right? Here's how you interview, here's how you greet your boss on the first day, here's how you work with a coworker you might not get along with. Right? And having those experiences uh, beforehand, having those kind of teachable moments beforehand, but also during, right? Those check-ins um, uh, along the way. So our our goal with the business and internship coordinator is that we're starting to identify students in each of the pathways who are beyond. Um, they they've taken all the classes, they're, maybe they're in health science, and you know what? They want to go work in the medical field, let's find them an internship. Right now, our teachers don't have time to do that, they would love to, trust me, they they absolutely would love to, but we need someone whose day is free, where they can go meet with a business, and maybe that business meeting takes an hour. Teachers don't have that hour within the day to do so. Um, and it's, it's, it'd be, we'd be hard pressed to rely on our advisory committee businesses to do that, because we rely on them for so much other, so many other things. Um, but this, the the internship coordinator would be identifying those pieces for the students, um, and then going out and and finding the gosh, finding the businesses, finding the partnerships that that we need. In addition to that, it's uh, honestly creating a da- database of guest speakers, people who maybe they don't want an intern, they don't want someone to come observe. But we're going to create a database of, hey, I'd love to come in and support you by coming in and maybe, maybe I'm just volunteering in your classroom. Maybe I'm early childhood education, and I want to come in and see what you're going to do, I want to come observe you. So all of those elements, all of those are things that the business and internship coordinator will be doing. Um, in order to really enhance kind of that upper end of our of our pathways. And I think it, eh, gosh, in addition to that, with, we have the the, what we call work site learning as well, um, students who they have a job, we can give them credit for working. Um, it's through work site learning, all they have to do is have taken a class that's related to that job. Um, and then we can give them credit, so this person will also be managing that work site learning side of things, um, which will hopefully help get those partnerships as well.
And it, is there guidance from the state on this or funds from the state on this? Uh, I know CTE sometimes gets separate funding federally as well as state level. Um, is is there, is there a structure that the state is asking us to follow?
So for work site learning, there is, um, there are certain rules and requirements, regulations, and that's, that is CTE funded. Um, honestly, we're being really creative how we're funding this position, this position will also be tasked with TAs. Um, so as part of kind of that job training, uh, part of the role, this person will be in charge of TAs, which we have a hundred and sixty per trimester. Um, so that gets us some FTE back, um, but it's also, you know, you're not checking in with TAs every single day, right? So you still have that freedom. Um, but really, this is a, it's interesting, because when I shared this with my regional colleagues, they were like, send us that job description, right? We want this too, nobody has it. Um, or if they do, it's a really big district, right? And you sort of, we're in that kind of mid-range where we're doing things that big districts can do. But you know, I I said to Jeff yesterday, we're like, we're nimble enough where we can make change quickly. Um, and we can actually just go, hey, we're going to shift this just slightly, and we're going to change it. Versus big districts, you know, you get caught in the bureaucracy and things take a lot longer to change.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
It's amazing information, appreciate that a lot, and I know you've got
Yeah, so uh, you know, choice programs to me is all about flexibility and adaptability for our students. Very similar to pathways, very student-driven, um, which is why I think it's an ideal fit. Um, you know, we've actually been talking about, maybe our choice programs are a pathway. Um, but I I might talk a little bit about that, I, we're still kind of brainstorming that. Uh, so I I have some kind of what's working this year, what's not working, I'm not going to sugarcoat anything, there are a lot of things that aren't working. Um, but there are some things that are working well. Um, so uh, what's working, you know, our philosophy of helping students move beyond the classroom. Right? That's a theme I think you see with with me and and what I like to talk about. We want students to move beyond the classroom, I think what we have considered in the past BPL, um, that's a philosophy of BPL. Um, I'm going to talk about, we're changing that slightly, um, because what's currently there isn't working. Uh, what's working, though, is a different learning environment. What we see from students who go to what used to be called alternative, but we've adapted to call it choice, because we do want it to be a choice that students make. We don't want it to be a place where we just place kids because you're a discipline problem or your attendance is bad. Right? That's, that doesn't lead to good outcomes, and that's what's been done in the past, truthfully, and that's honestly what's been done some this year as well. Um, like I said, no sugarcoating. Um, but the different learning environment is working for a lot of kids. Not, not the traditional sit in a classroom with thirty kids, not the traditional, hey, this is where I get my English, this is where I get my social studies. But different, maybe I'm blending social studies and English, right? Maybe I'm working on STEM, so science and math, but it's also engineering, right? Um, so that different learning environment is working for a lot of kids. And then our K-eight online curriculum is working. Um, we have a a little bit fewer than thirty students who are uh, enrolled in our fully online curriculum. Um, through, it's through Pearson, it's working, it works well. The reason it works well is because they have a parent at home helping them, right? Uh, most often, um, it's not working at the high school level. They don't have that parental support, the reason they were referred to online usually is because it's a discipline problem or attendance, or they're failing five classes and they need something different, and we're seeking something different. We're not wrong for seeking something different, it's just what we're pointing them to is wrong. The online, o- online, as you, as you can imagine, is actually harder. You have to be much more self-motivated to work through an online class than you do sitting there with a teacher helping you. So uh, fully online remote for high school students isn't working. Um, the number of students enrolled in BPL isn't working either, and part of that is is how we've promoted it, but part of it's who we put in there. What you'll see moving forward is, we're going to we're going to take BPL and we're going to make it our own. We're going to stop paying BPL money, and we're going to shift what we do with BPL to be more internship, job-based, project-based learning. Um, eh, it's, it's going to benefit our students to to a home at their level. Uh, and then the last bullet here, this is the biggest reason we hired business and internship coordinator is we have one teacher right now in BPL, and he doesn't have time to go get kids internships. Um, he's working all day with kids, he's got kids in front of him, so he's not out in the community, um, working on getting internships. So big changes, uh, of course, you know, we we changed, we we changed from alternative to choice. We added, we talked already about business and internship coordinator. But the the big, the big news, especially at the high school levels, we're going to change, um, right now, we have Seela, we have Ale, which is a it stands for alternative learning experiences, that's an acronym from the state, that's a funding formula. Um, we're going to change that to Viking Choice. Um, and curricular-wise, we're going to change that to be project-based learning. What we're finding is students need to be in person, but they do need some type of different instruction, different environment. So we'll still have the different environment, but we'll change the curriculum to be more project-based learning, more integrated learning. Um, so they're not getting uh, math out of a math textbook, they're going to be working through problems um, that give them the same content, the same standards throughout the class. We're going to change BPL, uh, we're going to change that to Viking Plus. The idea being that students can start in Viking Choice, and they work up to Viking Plus, because it's high school plus an internship. So the idea is that we're recruiting our students out of Viking Choice who show that tenacity and show that ability and and willingness to go out into the community to take their learning to another level. Right now, we don't have a great way to recruit to BPL, and so it's just like, yeah, I think you'd be a good fit. We kind of just place kids, and it's not the best fit. So what we want is our students who are in choice, they can stay in choice, but they can also kind of opt up or opt back to the high school, right? So they, we kind of have this kind of give and take back and forth. We think in in working with our our committee and working with students in that program, we think this is a a really good fit for for our kids. Um, because it's, it's learning in a different modality, but it's also giving you some incentive to work But it's also giving you some incentive to work towards. So instead of BPL being this kind of program where kids are othered, it's it's almost a selection. Right? It it makes it something kids want to do. They want to work towards it. So I'm really excited about that, about that shift. I think that's going to be a really great one for our students. The other shift would be that we are moving HomeLink. The curriculum right now is really, it it's it's curriculum that we have taken from schools that aren't even using it anymore. And I want to move away from that. Move towards the Pearson curriculum, which is online, but you have in-person supports. So it's not really changing HomeLink very much, but what it is, is it's it's changing what curriculum they use. Right? So we don't want to use, you know, curriculum that we've gotten rid of from John Campbell. We're gonna use curriculum that's modern, that's up to date, and that meets the same standards that that we're meeting in other buildings. So we will remove the name HomeLink. We'll call it Cila Academy Online. But they'll still have all of those supports in person that they're currently getting with a with a live teacher. Any questions on any of those?
Oh, I have a question about, you know what, you want it to be a choice. It's not gonna be with a, you know, the disciplined kids go. So how will a student be given these opportunities and are you worried about us? Use the word overselling, but I don't mean it that way. I mean, we get so much demand here. I mean, are we ready for a flood of kids if they migrate this way? Or how are you gonna filter and monitor that?
Yeah, it's a really great question. I think that with the right teachers, and I think we're working on that right now, with the right teachers, we'll be ready for it. Because I think what this does is this becomes how we do education. And I think that's the real game changer. When we start talking about integrating these pathways into Viking Choice and Viking Plus. That's the game changer. Then we're changing what education actually looks like. When every kid has to have an internship at the end of their pathway or at the, you know, even in grad launch, like that could be a baby step we could take, which that's coming eventually. But I think that the goal is that Viking Choice and Viking Plus, they start to shift. And so as those grow, maybe our traditional education shrinks because that's what our constituents, our community, our parents and our kids are demanding. Right? They're actually voting with their feet and they're ready and they're saying, you know what? Project based learning, it works. We're doing it well. You know, we've we've scaled it appropriately. We've kind of grown it over time. And that's more of what we want. So I I see it in two ways. I see the other piece too is is moving this lower. Because I think project based, I I'm a big fan of project based learning. I think that, you know, if you look at how kids, you know, if you watch your kids out in the yard, you know, I have a, I have a twelve year old and a nine year old. But watching him out in the yard, how's he learning? Right? How's he learning that how this saw works? I'm not out there like, okay, step one, do this, right? Trial, error, he's working on a project, but he's learning some of these skills along the way. I I I think that, you know, moving more into that realm is is the way we start going.
That's sort of the essence, though, of CTE in general is is hands on. Health sciences, it's the dummy on the floor. We're gonna teach you CPR and you're gonna get down here and do it. That's project. Like kind of the same thing.
Yes. And and I think that's why it's a match made in heaven, right? It's it it makes sense to to have them together. And that's why we've been thinking, hey, is this its own pathway or is honestly, is this in every pathway? Right? And and originally with our pathways, we had a university bound pathway. And we started thinking about, it's like every pathway leads to university. Right? Let's, we changed that paradigm and and that's, you know, it's gonna be the same way with project based learning. It's not a pathway, it's the pathway, right? It's every pathway.
Want to hear from you tonight.
Okay. Well, I can say from a student perspective that I know my fellow high school students and I have really appreciated the increased number of CTE classes. I think it helps for a lot of kids to connect with their learning at school to the real world because you know, one thing that a lot of my peers like to say is, when will I ever use this in real life? And so definitely these CTE classes, it's really apparent how these skills can be used in real life. And I've said this before, but I went to the middle school a couple of months ago and I really like to see a lot of the elective and CTE options that they had there as well, because that's something I would have enjoyed having in middle school. And so definitely good work. And I can say from on behalf of my fellow students and I that we really appreciate all the CTE classes.
I can tell that you don't sleep much.
A little bit of motivation.
Lying awake at night, dreaming up what the next step is and where we're gonna go from here. But we appreciate your passion and your energy and your commitment. It's unbelievable.
Thank you.
I also noticed the Alicia nodding as Jeff's getting more and more motivated. Alicia's getting pumped up. A little bit of synergy happening there.
Well, you just wait until Colton gets with those two, then it, then watch out. Yeah, sometimes we just
Well, you've said it a number of times and it's worth repeating at the close here is that, you know, what you're doing is where kids want to be. And you're founding the resources and the pathways, no unintended or connection there, but pathways to make that happen. Isn't that really what education should be all about? So thank you very much for all the hesitate to ask a, ask the question, well, what else do you need? Because I know you're not shy about asking for that. Just know that
Oh, I, hey, I find, I find my own money and
Just know that this board supports everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me. If you have any questions, you guys know how to find. Yeah, and I get to follow that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We go, yeah, moving on to, we're gonna look at the school calendar graph for next year. Got some interesting things to share with us, I think, about about next year's possibilities.
And that's a good word to use. This is a draft and some possibilities. The calendar that you have is a handout there, which is identified as draft option two with a date. And I can already have found out one more change we're gonna need to make in March. We've identified the eighth, but the calendar actually says the fifteenth. So this is, we've had multiple renditions of of a calendar that we've been working on for now months. This calendar is different in that it doesn't follow exactly to a T the language that's in the the certificated employees collective bargaining agreement, which has guided the calendar work for many, many, many years here in the district. This does change that. And so we have a responsibility to work with our labor union in regards to this. And that's why you haven't seen a calendar as not a draft in front of you because we are working with them in order to try to find a way to improve the calendar to meet our students' needs better. This calendar also comes to you tonight for your review of it, but also secondary, as you see a resolution in item number D or letter D with regards to parent conferences. And these two are connected. Currently, parent conferences in our district are done in half days. That week of parent conferences takes place in the fall and another week coming up next week. Those half day parent conferences are half days of school, which at least my professional opinion and are are not as beneficial to students as a regular full day of school. It creates not only challenges for for the students, but also for families as they try to navigate half days of where students are gonna go, who need support and all the other things that go along with it. But this calendar is, and and the resolution are one part of it. The the part I'm gonna start with is the parent teacher conference part, which puts two full days of parent conferences in those weeks that are identified in green on this calendar. The other days that would traditionally be half days are full days of teacher of of instruction, full regular school days. The allowance by our state is a waiver process through OSPI that you can apply for a waiver and use those two full days of parent conferences. And those can count as part of the one hundred and eighty instructional days. So our students would go for one hundred and seventy six school days. And then for for additional days to get to one eighty would be for the parent conferences. A couple of things have to happen in order for the waiver to be supported by OSPI is that you can't reduce your instructional minutes by any of these changes. And so for people to know is we're not in reducing instructional minutes, we're just moving the time around. And the other part of it is that the state is similar to my thinking is that you also need to show a reduction in half days. Because they also believe that half days are are not in the best interest for student learning. So this calendar does take that into into consideration. And that the waiver that we would be requesting by your resolution assures that that would be taking place. So that's one change that this calendar brings about. Another change that this calendar brings about is in November. And we are interested in piloting or seeing what goes on with an ability to provide some additional to support to our students who may need it and not wait. November, although that we are into school, you know, almost three full months there. Those two days that are identified in that purple lavender color there are non-school days. They are not counted as part of the one seventy six or one eighty. They are additional days for students to gather and needed needed support across K through twelve that students would be identified. And then they would be obviously invited and encouraged to attend for their additional support. They would be regular school days. Our staff would work those if they chose to, and we would encourage them to do so. But we know that some staff will choose not to work those days. For the high school, it would be great benefit to have students the ability who have had this maybe an incomplete or a needed additional time to complete the coursework. It would give them that time to do that as well. All of those things are happening, but in many cases, especially at the high school, are happening outside of the of a normal school day in the evenings or you're through an online system or maybe a little bit during the summer as well. But we feel like that, that those two days identified in November twentieth and twenty first would be what is so-called mini intercession, right before we break for for the Thanksgiving break. You will, you may know of other school districts who have really expanded their calendar into a more balanced calendar where the length of the school year is longer. The breaks within the school year are longer and those are for intercession purposes. Our pilot of this or our our study of this is just with those two and only in the fall to see where it takes us in the future.
The essence of that, though, is that that entire week of Thanksgiving, because those first two days of the week are optional, even though we'll invite, it is still optional. Kindergarten and first grade level, there's probably not gonna be a lot of making up. There are, and I might be totally wrong. Yes, is that that heavily, heavy year on the middle and
That's a possibility. We do believe that there are students that we've identified. Their teachers have identified in the elementary levels that they could benefit from some additional one-on-one or small group support in a specific academic area or maybe multiple academic areas, but those two days could be directed more as individual student needs. All right. Everything else within the calendar is somewhat traditional until we get to March. And I made mention of the day that was misidentified by date. We have moved, our high school has been on a trimester semester system for now multiple years. And and our district is gonna go to a trimester system. This day is another one that we're we're piloting and looking for the benefit of having a day between trimesters. And trimesters are also considered to be grading periods as well. So that a student would go through a grading period, they would end their grading period, they would not have a school day before the next period would start. And this, some of this is is really, I have to say, has has some more benefit for secondary educators. In that, many of our secondary educators at the high school specifically are teaching a a schedule of courses during a trimester. After that trimester is over, they may have a whole new schedule of courses that they need to prepare, prepare for. So they have to end a trimester, get prepared for the next trimester. And we thought that maybe placing a day in between those would be a benefit for the educators to get themselves prepared to complete the trimester before. Take care of evaluation of students, take care of standards based grading, take care of all those things. But also have a day to prepare themselves for when students come in with a new schedule and they themselves could be teaching a new schedule as well.
So that in-between day listed here between try two and
Correct.
But not in, not between one and two.
No, we have chosen not to do one and two, just simply because we have the intercession days there. And and it really is again, a calendar to maybe study some things and see what could potentially be in the future.
Is that day in March, I I'm fully, especially being an English teacher who grades papers, really appreciate giving some teachers some time to do some grading. That's a contracted day for the teachers. So you're not asking them to volunteer their time to finish up and is that right?
No, no, that would be a compensated day.
Right, thank you.
The other part of this is we have, we have taken two days and made them in preparation for the possibility of having to make up days due to weather. And so you've noticed in our calendars in the past, one of those days has been surrounding the President's Day weekend. And it's identified as the sixteenth of February. That's a snow day. And so if we need to use it for a makeup day, that would be a day that we would identify and make that day up. If not, it's a non-student day. We've done that same idea and taken it into May, surrounding the holiday weekend there as well. And that would be considered our second snow or weather makeup day. Why that day? That day is by far probably the most used day by our employees to not be working because they're taking vacation leave, personal leave or other types of leave available to them. And so we run in a tremendous amount of challenge being able to fully staff that day. I would imagine by student attendance, that is one of the most highly missed days of school as well. It also also just happens to be that same weekend that we have a lot of students who are involved in activities and athletics. Especially if they're participating at the state level, they're gone anyway.
That February snow day is not safe anymore either, it seems like. Yeah, yeah.
With all those things in the calendar, what what has happened here is that this calendar does not match the languages within the collective bargaining agreement that we agreed to. It doesn't match. It violates the language. And so we wanted to partner with our labor union and get them to a place where we both agree this would be a good calendar as we move forward next year. So that's why it's 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 taken some time. I'll be honest with you, taken a lot longer than I would have hoped for. But it has taken some time and and it, but it has given us some time to refine and and get to a calendar that we think has some great benefits, not only for next year, but as we move forward as well. It's also given us the opportunity to seek out and and know about the waiver that we can apply for with regards to parent conferences. And the, all these are, some of these are gonna be new, especially for some educators that have been used to the way that we've done parent conferences and for our families and for our students as well. Alicia, you've worked hand in hand with me on this calendar as well as all the other cabinet members. Is there anything from your perspective you want to share?
The one thing that I I, I do appreciate that Kevin and that what thirty-five iterations of this calendar that we've gone through is the idea of looking at how do we provide opportunities but maintain what we already have as days? Because you know, this year we had, and last year we had the four additional professional development days. Those were Esther funds, which we knew we weren't gonna be able to maintain. But we had four days in the contract. So that's where we looked at how could we distribute those differently? So instead of having three days in August, it's two, so that we could have a March date where we could have the trimester break, which while yes, there's the grading and the trimester change for our secondary. It also provides an opportunity at our elementary level for them to be able to be reporting on where students are progressing and their standards to families as well. It also provides an opportunity at our elementary level for them to be able to be reporting on where students are progressing in their standards to families as well as. Just having an opportunity for some professional development because those days won't be there. Um, so I I I was appreciative of that where we're still kind of ending at the same time, but we can look at it differently. And then I'll just reemphasize that idea with the intercession or the mini intercession. Um, I mean, this year we're just talking to our leadership team. There would have been students at all grade levels that could have benefited from that at that point. And knowing that it's better to intervene at the time than it is to wait till summer. And sometimes the skills we'd be intervening on, they received in October or November. And that's a long time then to wait to get intervention on those. So. You thought that trying it with a couple of days would be good and then we could look at maybe where else that could fit in the future if it does, it does work.
And then it does hold the traditional traditional values that our community has voiced and talking with Shane. Um, he has voiced that through his work that our our community has has shared that they appreciate. Uh, the lengthy summer break and to not get into extending the school year. Uh, and so there is a nice lengthy summer break and we know that and we know that's a priority and we know. At least when Shane did that work, that 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 is something that needed to be considered as we, if we were to go and look at a different type of a calendar and so. This does give that same traditional start date last Monday within August. And then it does end within that same traditional week. Uh, that we that has been tradition within the district as well, obviously the first or second week within June. What's uh holds true to some of the 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 wants of our community and and our parents.
I think that's real smart. Um, obviously, we don't, we want to keep peace with our community and do what. Families and can just imagine the ripple um with daycare and works and work schedules and so forth if students are home. You know, outside of a more traditional situation, yet the long summer I know is a desired thing within our.
And uh, we talked about grant funding earlier and how we're able to to leverage grant funds. Um, the district uh last year, the year before, Alicia, uh secured grant funding for. Uh, the 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 look at calendar ideas like this and the ability to use those funds to support intercession type activities, correct?
Yes, we are part of a consortium with the E S D and so we've been part of that and then I requested that we continue for next year to provide funds for us as well.
Nice. So with that, that gives you the idea behind the calendar and then it gives you uh the action that's needed for us to take this. Calendar, make it a little bit more formal, correct the error that you see. Submit it to O S P I. We're going to submit it to O S P I even before we have total agreement from our labor partners. And then continue to work through with them and not wait and and have to wait on O S P I. So hopefully O S P I will turn this around. Every indication that I know about is that they are. Um, very accepting of these, they want to see uh calendars like this with the parent conferences. And then we would have the go-ahead. If we can't get to a a common ground with uh with our labor. Um, then obviously we have this in our back pocket for work potentially next year. But we're going to push from superintendent cabinet level and and we've not. We've not seen hesitation like, no, this is not something we want to talk about. So there's conversations going on. It just is taking a little bit longer than we all had hoped.
So the resolution then, it's not committing us or locking us into anything, it just opens the door at a state level for the discussion to continue. So that in the event that this comes comes to fruition that. We don't have that hurt.
Correct, and uh, we're, you know, we're, I, we're, we've made significant progress um in our conversations. And uh, we hope to have those conversations all completed and the approval of the waiver. And everything ready to go and then be able to communicate that to out to our students and our families very soon.
Yeah, the questions or comments by anybody? Alright, I'll move this ahead then and just uh make a motion that we approve the resolution twenty twenty-three dash two. Waiver as presented. Questions? Voice of vote, all those in favor indicate with an aye.
Aye.
Host. Okay, Kevin, thank you and Alicia and the entire team for and and the, you know, the teaching staff for. Engaging in what could potentially be a better calendar for our student. So um, appreciate the work that you're doing there on our cap.
The next item on your agenda under administration is the school board meeting dates. Or next year or next school year and really we just mirrored what you're currently doing with regards to a four-thirty start on a regular board meeting. Same uh time of the year and then study sessions being at seven A M on the Thursday as well.
This would be the time if anybody had any suggestions, but personally, I'll just go first. I. I liked the Tuesday rotation, the seven A M on the first Tuesday, the four-thirty. Fourth, Thursday, did I say Tuesday, sorry, um, Thursday, uh, me it fits, it works well. So I'm going to have to stay in the course with that. Anybody else have any other thoughts?
Four-thirty's good.
Work for you?
Yeah, I know we've had a couple. Little bit of input from the community at times that it's too early, but then flip side of it, we had some complaints that it was too late with six o'clock here, so. I think four-third, the ability to watch it on the video. If there was ever too much concern with that, I wonder if we could ever do a second. Community input section, if we get it right. I bet normally comes in about four forty. If we had a tail end of it where we could do it at the end of the meeting, we could not dispose time based on how long. Give an opportunity, give community input again towards.
And maybe what we do there is put that on a place folder in our. For now, um, I think what we'd like to do is adopt this unless somebody sees something different. Like to do otherwise, uh, this is prepared, the dates are right, this has been reviewed and. So this could be something that could adopt tonight and not just in place.
I'll move, we had up the school board meeting dates for twenty-three through twenty-three, twenty-four.
All those in favor, please, if you can with an aye.
Aye.
Those. Great comment, though, you know, let's look at. Hey, we are up to item number seven, student board representative report by. Student rep that was a very busy lady uh in the last half of her senior year. And on her way to the state event, my gosh, you're going to put me strong, Aunt Natalie.
Oh, first of all, I'd like to point out, in case you're wondering why this person is videoing me, um, that's my dad. Um, I have to make a video resume for a scholarship, so he's videoing to include this in the video resume, so. It's not just a random person videoing. Um, other than that, I don't have a ton to say. I recently attended the wellness committee meeting. Um, it's very interesting to kind of hear the dialogue between different stakeholders in the district as far as the nutrition standards. Um, I I didn't feel like I was a ton of help there, but I was able to give maybe a little bit of ten cents about kind of. You know, balancing nutrition and also the fundraising desires of different student organizations. Um, yeah, that's about all I have. Um, and I also.
When are your, um, when's your DECA coming?
So this is, this is actually kind of interesting. I'm going to DECA in Orlando. And then I'm coming back from that and then within twenty-four hours turning around and going to Cincinnati.
Oh, my.
Yeah, so um, that that'll be interesting, um, uh, fun, but but definitely a bit tired. Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
And LJ, I'm sure you are, but you should be extremely proud of this young lady. She is phenomenal.
Alright, thank you. Alright, move on to our executive director of student learning, Jacob, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So um, in the, in our board docs, I had provided you i-ready reading and i-ready math data. I'm going to go through kind of a general overview and a presentation. You have more data that's in that. In those two documents, but I'll explain how to read and interpret that from the the general perspective. But just wanted to give you kind of a snapshot of where we're at right now. And this would be January data. At our building, so we can kind of see where we're at from our E L A and our math standpoint. And then I'll just give you a little bit of data from the high school. Um, and then I'll just plan on giving you an update in June when we see our our final results on both. Um, so I'll just jump through this. You know, I like to have that Viking, that promise, and I know anything that you've been to that. Um, T N L team or the district has been looking at, we really are focusing on that district goal of the Viking promise, really focusing on equity, engaging, personalized and safe. And the data really is where, um, you know, this is one data point that we're looking at, how are we doing with that? We have some challenges, we have some um areas that we're showing some really good growth in, which is excellent, is what we want to see at this point. Just, this has been our focus, this has been our lens at the district level with everything we're doing, so we're just trying to keep true to our Viking promise. And then I've talked to you about this when we were doing our elementary principal roundtable. And really, the data that we're, I'm sharing with you today is where we start to make decisions on who should be supported in our tier twos or tier three. Remember, we're using all green because all students are green. In the past, we would see green, then we would see yellow for a tier two and red for a tier three. But really, we realized that kids are going back and forth in those tiers depending on skills. And so they're all green and then we, just the range of green is changing. So that's, that process really has been. And where students receive those services are through our data, and this is just one point that we look at. So our i-ready data is for K through eighth grade only. And in kindergarten, we just started it in winter. We don't do our fall because we have the walk kids requirement through the state that we do. And so we start with our benchmark assessments there in winter, but in um first through eighth grade, we do it three times a year. Do a fall, a winter and a spring. So this is really focusing on the winter data. But I'll give you where they're at in terms of um growth from fall. Benchmark, what we're looking at is the likelihood of students to be on target as the year ends with grade level standards. So it's just at this point in time, where are they at in those standards? And sometimes what they are being tested on, they have yet to get to. Is the tests are looking at standards that we expect and then what's the likelihood of what you know coming in as a, as you know, thinking first grade? What do you know of first grade standards in the fall for first grade? What do you know in winter? And then what do you know in the spring? So what we want to see is there's growth throughout because the expectation is we wouldn't have all students know everything in first grade in the fall, right? So that's why we call it a benchmark. It's like, we know we want them to be here, where are they at at these dipsticks? And what's the likelihood of them being on standard based on that? So it's one that we can utilize that to say, you know, there's a point where we want you to be mid-year, are we there yet? And so some of the data that I'm showing you will tell us, are we there or not? So starting with kindergarten, like I said, this is the first one, so that, and it's kind of hard to see. Um, but the main thing with this one is you're only going to see green and yellow with kindergarten. Our red says it's two or three more years behind, but kindergarten is our first year, so we don't have any behind yet on that. Um, and I know that um Melissa Singletary, who's the principal there, had shared a little bit of this with you when you met last month. But the idea with this is, you know, usually you want to kind of see students progressing. They were a little disappointed in the data they have, but if we compare this to what we had last year. Um, the results at the end of the year is always pretty staggering at how much growth has been made with it. Um, we have, and you know, Jamie, you kind of mentioned this when we were talking about the intercession and where kids come into our buildings and what do they already know? Some have had preschool or had experiences where they know letters, they know sounds, they know numbers, and we have some that know none of that, right? And so this is a mid-year point, but that growth with our kinder, it's very similar to our preschool, we just see it. It it's it's the biggest growth that you're going to see. So it'll be interesting to see how they look um when we get to spring in just a few months. Coming close or coming quick. The gold would be that they're just, they claim at one level behind, but what that means is they have yet to ma- remember, this is all based on kindergarten. They haven't met the kindergarten standards yet is what that would look like. Um, and so as we progress up, you won't see the red until second grade, right? Because that's where they could have two or more years. So here's um J C P and I'm, and here I'm giving you the whole building. When you look in the the data file that is given to you in board docs. You'll be able to see first and second grade broken out. So that top again is just looking at it from a general standpoint. How many students are above, which means they're further along than we would expect at this point. Where they're right at there is the green, the yellow, they're pretty close, and then the red would be where we're starting to see some. Um, students that are are starting to fall behind a little bit, but to look at fifteen percent in that regard is huge. And the reason there was zero before is because again, there wouldn't have been the ability to be two or more years behind because they were just incoming first and second graders. Um, but what I really want to point out is that bottom one, and this is where I was saying, this is the progress to annual typical growth. So we would expect every student should make at least a years a years growth, right? So no matter where you're at, we want that at least a year. And so right here where we want to see at that midpoint is fifty percent. Right? Because we're at midpoint, we want fifty percent of our students to be there, knowing by the end of the year, we should have a hundred percent. So they've even exceeded that a little bit. Um, and then in your data sheets that I've given you, we broke it down by how, what's the percentage of students in in like how much growth. They have made and comparing this, that bottom blue table or um chart to what was last year. Last year, they were around fifty-two percent and by the end of the year, they were over a hundred percent, which means students were making over a years growth. At the end of the year, so they're on a really good trajectory at J C P with the students to have had that. So, you know, for some of those students, we need to go more than one year, but the majority of our students, they're already, you know, beyond that. They, we want that fifty percent, they're at fifty-four as a group. So that's really great data to see. Um, and it kind of helps us as that midpoint of like, where are we on target and where we want to be? When you go into C I S, similar now, we, you know, obviously there could be two or three grade levels below just because as students progress. Um, we have and and really where we kind of focus on is that green and yellow because those students are like right in that range. Um, we really target the 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 red students um that would fall into that on what are the specific skills? That's where our tier two process, so that I know the principals were talking to you, they call it the walk to read or go times depending on the building. Where they get that additional support, but we're also giving additional support to anyone in the green and yellow, it's just extensions that we're providing them. But if you look at C I S, this is what is super amazing that at this point, there are seventy, seventy-five percent of the students. Have already made a years growth by mid-year. So I mean, this is, this this trajectory is just amazing, which could, I mean, you got to put all the. Um, all of that into the teachers and the work they're doing with the students, how targeted their intervention system is to ensure that's happening. And in your packet, you'll see it by the grade levels, you'll see where the different grade levels fit in that. But right now, we, as a building, we want, we would want to be at fifty and they're at seventy-five. So that trajectory is just amazing. Where students are growing.
Understand then, I'm having trouble connecting the top line with the bottom one. See, you know, the gold and red and red with black on the far right side there. Would add up to thirty, forty-nine, fifty, fifty.
Say, there's about thirty-one percent that are in those two or more years. So when we talk about annual typical growth, that's from wherever you're at. Like, we want a at least a years growth for every student, no matter where you're at. So if you're three years behind, one year would make you two years, right? So we have, right now, we have students already, so potentially if they were three years behind, they could already have made a years growth, which makes them two. But they can continue to grow because they still have a half a year, right, from when this was. So knowing that our population was seventy-five percent. Is already at that. It doesn't mean that you're at grade level, it means you're making growth from wherever you're at. And that's where we'll start to see more. And then the other example that I provided in your, in your documents is what's called the stretch goals. And you'll see in there that our stretch goals typically write, and that's where we want them to make even more, right? And so students in the red, we have larger stretch goals than we do for students in the green, right? Because there's not as far to stretch to be there. Um, and so if we can get fifty percent of our population making stretch goals, that's even better. And so it's just that we have not had a year where at this point in time that we've had a building at seventy-five percent. So it's, it's super exciting and, you know, it's kudos to C I S's staff and the way that they've set their structure up to be able to support students. That's, that's great. Yeah. And and here's our middle school, so similar process in what you were seeing before. Um, it's our breakdown for, again, this is for our reading or E L A or English Language Arts data. Um, they're a little bit not as far along with their progress to an annual goal that we're wanting. Um, this is pretty similar as what we saw last year, too. They still got really close to that hundred percent by the end of the year. We start to see some some accelerated. But this also tells us where we need to have some, some support and maybe some considerations that we need to look at with. Um, within our middle school system, specifically when E L A, we got a new curriculum this year. Specifically when ELA, we got a new curriculum this year. So they're learning that, but where can some of that be considered? And we also, from a standpoint of each grade, we have this and so that we can look at, is there a specific grade level that needs additional support? I Ready, who we do the assessment with also will let us know for students that have made growth. Here are the skills that we see were strengths. Here's the areas that need further assistance. And they do the same with the students that haven't. So there's some data in there that can help us on making decisions on where we need to support the students after. So that's our ELAs. Any questions on ELA from what you've seen? Okay. And it's similar with math, same thing, same views. So it's nothing changes there. It's just, um, we typically, and this is kind of just a national norm where we don't see the strength as much in math as we see in our ELA. When we look at it from kindergarten, again, this was the first time they were assessed with the assessment. They'll be assessed in spring as well. You know, we didn't have as many students that were with the kindergarten standard yet, but remember this is a progression. But I know that they've been doing a lot of work with, with students and with numbers and, and understanding how to do comprehend, uh, the calculations. That's what they're starting to work with as well and counting. When we go to a JCP and this is that first and second grade together. You know, the, the one thing I'll note too, is when you see that top bar that has the greens through the red. You look below it where it says underneath the green with the black slashes and it says from 2%, from 4%, from 62. That's what the fall data was for the building. So as you look at this, they don't have any students that are three or more, because they can't be three or more. But there was 31% of their building in the fall that was in two or grade levels below. And now it's 15, right? So there is tremendous growth. So those students most likely have kind of moved into the yellow, which expanded. But then we have also more in both of our greens than we had before. So we see students progressing through. And then you look at their growth, they're at 62% already. So I mean, they're, they've made some big gains and you can tell that when you just even look at that red number, right? Where we see that growth with them. And then here's our SIS, um, similar. And you can see that, you know, the percentages from all, they're in those parentheses in bold underneath. And then they're at 52%. So it's where we want to be. And then it's just exciting to see that, you know, that means those students are making growth, they're, they're making gains in their, their math data. And then our last one is at the middle school. Again, our, our typical growth is lower here, but it's similar as I mentioned with our ELA. The system does give us what are some areas and that we need to consider. One of the things that I, I have been working with, and you might hear this from teachers if you go in the buildings, that I am very firm in that we need to be using manipulatives with our math, no matter the grade level. I was a previous eighth grade math teacher that I even use pattern blocks in my class. It's just sometimes you need to have that tangible, concrete understanding of mathematics before you go abstract. And so I know that's one thing that we've been working on at the middle school, that if we have students that haven't gotten a conceptual understanding, how do we take it back down? And use it. And it's just, um, so there are some things they've been considering and we've been working with the ESD to get some additional ideas on how to support our mathematics. Any questions with math?
It looks like this is all of, all of SIS.
This one is of all the middle school. You have a breakdown in that packet. I was just giving it so you understood how to read what was in the packet for you for all of them. But this is the building as a whole. So it's all three grade levels together. When you look at it. So they, you know, they have made some gains since fall in terms of the three below. And so the red have been moving through a little bit. They have more that are actually in exceeding than they had in the past. So this is not as much movement as we've seen in the other grade levels. But there, there's still movement, which is good.
Gives you a pretty clear picture of where to celebrate and where to work.
Yeah, it does. And it, but I mean, and I think also, um, just what, what are the skill, you know, the, the way, when you progress through the grade levels, there's more and more standards that you need to focus on, right? So like, when you think of kindergarten, you have this set of standards and that's what everybody's getting. When you get to first, you have the Kinder in the first. When you get to second, you have K through two. By the time you get to eighth grade, you have K through eight, right? So it, the system, when we get some results back from iReady, it does kind of give us, what are some key things we can target into? To try to support the students versus nine years of standards, right? And that can be, plus you don't want to go to a kindergarten standard with an eighth grader. Like where is going to be kind of the bang for our buck to get the best understanding of standards so they can keep progressing through? So it is, it's nice to have these. It's not telling us that kids can or can't do something. It's giving us a snapshot, some ideas of what skills we need to focus on, and then we can move forward with that. So we'll get spring results. I'll be able to share that with you guys in June. We can see what the growth is. And it'll be really exciting to see with that typical growth, what each building landed in the two key areas that we're assessing right now. And then I just wanted to share some of the high school data. We do not have a benchmark assessment there. How they're doing it with their, their courses, through their different courses, they have common assessments. But that, I mean, there's so many courses that to try to compile all that and give results is, it's not as easy as it is when we look at it from a content specific ELA and math at our K8 system. But I did want to share that, um, you know, next week they'll be doing their second boot camp opportunity. But they did do a boot camp opportunity right after first trimester. It was for three days, the week, um, three days each of the two weeks just before Christmas break. And it was for students that had any incompletes. So when we went into, or when we ended the first trimester, that first data line there is we had 185 students with incompletes. Through the boot camp, 57 of them were able to change those incompletes to a grade. And that was an opportunity we had never had before, which is something that we could consider during our intercession. You know, in next year, if that calendar changes. Then if we think of it in terms of incompletes, because there was students that had multiple of those. We had nine, we had 301 incompletes out of all the students in all the trimester, or all of the courses. And 90 of those incompletes were changed into grades. So while there still is students with incompletes, you know, a third of them were able to change those through those dates. And so because of that, they're doing it again next week. There'll be an opportunity for that as well. And I know that Colton and his staff are working on the data sheets just this week on, um, looking at it. Because some kids with incompletes, they can complete a portion of their work during boot camp and then they can get a grade. Some of them need to take the class over. So, you know, of those 185, some of them needed to take the class over because of how much was missed. And some could actually do that extra work or do the work that they were missing and then be able to get the grade. But, I mean, that's a third of the students that in prior years, those would have just stayed incomplete till, till summer. And then that was the next opportunity. And so that's a long time to go through that you can also compile more incompletes, which means there's information they're not getting when they go on to their next class. Yeah. So it's just kind of that, like it's, it's as good as we can do right now without putting something in the calendar that gives actual days for it. So, um, kudos to his staff because he has teachers that are staying after to support the students and, um, and we'll see how the second round goes too.
Well, now to just tie back into the idea of the calendar with those two days for those targeted kids here that help them make up some of the work.
Yep. Yep. Yeah. And then it would just be part, you know, it'd be days that they could come in and they could work on that. And teachers could be, you know, however many teachers we need, we could see who would be willing to work those to support them. Right now we're doing it after school, but, I mean, you know, that might be better of incentive not to have to work a 10-hour day. But to have some days you could come in, you know, when it wasn't scheduled. So. And then the other thing too, I know that attendance has been one over the last few years. It's been a concern. And so Colton was sharing this with me and we thought we would share. He's like, you can't steal all my thunder when I'm presenting next month. And I was like, only still a little bit. But the, you know, first trimester, um, our attendance, our average attendance was 83%, which in prior years had been six. I mean, we even had some days where we were down in the 60s. So that was really high. But our biggest thing was, is, you know, and Jeff spoke to quite a few of the things. Because it's kind of been through a CTE, CTE lens that we've done it. But our freshmen, when we look at them, they were close to almost 90%, 88% were attending that first trimester. And out of our incompletes, it was, it was a very, very small number of ninth grade that was in the incompletes. Which just shows that putting in the freshman launch class, having those connections and getting, um, we have a ninth grade success committee that works with them. Where they mentor students. It's just, now we just feel like, have to see how do we replicate that as they progress through. And then this last trimester that we just came out of, we always see a dip. That whole Thanksgiving, Christmas, January just makes it really hard. Because, you know, I come to school and we only have to come for a couple of weeks. But we did have some, you know, went less with our full population was at 77%. But even our freshmen still stayed in that upper 80 and they were at 83. So it just shows that, you know, when we think of the courses we're doing, the pathways, the opportunities, students are coming, right? They're starting to get more engaged. They're starting to see. And it's great to hear Natalie that on your gaze's end, you're seeing it as well, right? But our data is starting to reflect that. So I just wanted to share some of the highlights, give you an idea of where we're at with our ELA math and some key things that we're doing at the high school.
It can't be easy work because there's so many moving parts. Dealing with kids, dealing with a lot of circumstances out of our control. Some of it is, and so we need some creative thinking and to, you know, put the numbers down that say, here's the real picture and to base into that. That's not easy. So appreciate what you're doing and what the teachers and your staff. Look at it and.
Yeah. And I mean, and it's kudos to Colton. He, he shares the attendance data every week with staff. It just lets them know like this is, this is what it was this week and it ebbs and flows. But the percentages as a whole, that just, it looks, it's much better than it has been for the last couple of years.
I, I had a quick question about the iReady data. Are we able to compare our data to neighboring school districts?
So iReady is not one that's a, like a state assessment. It's an individual choice by a district to use it. So, um, when it's state, then the state allows it all to be compiled together and then we have access to it. iReady, because they're an independent company, we don't have access to other districts who could, who are using it. Like I know East Valley uses it. Um, so we don't have access to their data. So we don't. The only thing that they can tell us is if, if they feel like we're, um, and that's that typical growth kind of piece is where they would say is use that because that's, that's based off of what their experiences have been, based on the data that they have of students, right? That's where they would come back. So no, we can't just because it's an independent provider.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. All right. We'll move on then to the District Operations Team of Stephanie and Chris.
All right. I'll dive into our enrollment update to start. We had a slight decline from February to March by nine FTE. We're still looking good. As Jeff mentioned earlier, we have fully recovered from COVID as we've talked to previous meetings here this school year. Our current count is 43 FTE over our June 2022 count and 117 over the count from June 2021 and eight over from March 2020. So we, we are fully recovered and continuing to grow a little bit. We had a little slip backwards this month, but we're still looking good. We're at on average, 3,662 FTE for the year. For March, it was 36, 47 or almost 36, 48. We're 102 FTE over projection right now. It's a little higher than we like to be as far as being over projection. Because we like to be in the 20 to 30 range, but this year we are, we are over. So enrollment wise, you can see the report tonight, look at it, building by building. But pretty much for the most part, we're running over projection at all of our buildings other than our Kinder campus. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Well, I don't have a question, but I think an observation could be made here that we've recovered the loss, the decline that we had, the experience during COVID years, which every district probably in the country did. And in my observation, I see in the news every day, districts are cutting staff. They're cutting budget by millions of dollars and by hundreds of stu-, by hundreds of staff. And these are school districts that, you know, they miscalculated. And, and I just think it's worth noting how fortunate we are here in Seela to have taken the conservative approach that you have and the scientific way that you've gone about it to try and figure out what's the right balance here. And it's just kudos to you, Chris and Stephanie for taking that line, a line of thinking on it. And also to the parents and community for believing that Seela schools are good schools and returning to our. Because that's a, that's amazing. That, that, that helps keeps us whole. So, um, there's a, there's a lot to be happy. And then also thank you to the teachers and staff for just making Seela an attractive district to want to be. Because it's, I mean, it, it takes everybody. And so it, and, 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 well, I think it's just worth mentioning. And thanks for the leadership for keeping us whole along the way and for the community. Amazing to see when I compare what I see about Seela compared to other districts in the state and beyond. We're in a very good place and that has a lot to do with what's going on right now on this table.
Yes, it is sad to read a lot of the news articles lately with the state, around the state that are actually closing schools and really in financial troubles with the enrollment decline. So anyway, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to have Stephanie jump into the financial status.
All right. So, um, you guys have in front of you the February budget matters report. February, we're halfway through the year. We've received about 44% of our revenues. So as you look at those categories there, you'll see a couple that are lagging behind quite a bit. One of them is our federal revenues and that's really tied to our ESAR funds and those federal grants that we have. We haven't, we, we built a lot of capacity in there, not only for ESAR, but some other grants that we have from, funded from ESAR that we haven't fully spent yet or are lagging behind in spending. It is also a reimbursable grant that we have to spend the money before we can. That plays into consideration there as well. Levy, we are behind a little bit, but keep in mind, April is usually the time when we get a large amount of money that's. April, you'll see that. Expenditures, we have spent just under 48% of our expenditures. We're pretty much on target there. Our ending fund balance for February is 8,440,000.
Questions on that?
Thanks, Steph.
Okay. My last report this evening is the annual asset preservation report. You can see in your packets, I won't go through the detail of this, but we have a report for the middle school and one for Robert Lynch kindergarten. As a reminder, Robert Lynch kindergarten, this is the first report for them. When we receive state math money, we're required to have a building assessment, building condition assessment report then for the first year of the building. We don't have John Campbell yet because he's not fully built out. And then every six years, we're required to have a, a building condition assessment done by a certified person that does the report. And we can, Frank can do it eventually if he goes through the course to get certified. But currently we use Brent Harding, our architect. And so these, these two reports, the first report for the Kinder and then middle school, they were up for the rotational assessment. So you can see in the reports, um, if you have any questions at all, I can answer those questions or, or I can have you ask. You can feel free to contact Frank Grino or just funnel your questions to me and I'll get them answered from Frank. But, uh, we are, this, this information is entered into what they call the ICAO system. And, um, that's how we plan and also make sure that our, our building.
It looks like an excellent rating on Robert Lynch, which, you know, I suppose could be expected for a time around. And I know you've identified the areas in the middle school that were, you know, identified and probably have a plan to address those.
Yes.
I guess the question I would have is how do you and Frank feel about?
Well, we feel good. The middle school definitely after McKinstry came in and we upgraded our filtering system to stronger filters. That's helping with the problem that we, you know, been, or concern, I guess, if you will, over the years since we built the school. But I think the chiller issue, that's a typical thing that they do. He said that they designed, they're designed for maximum efficiency. So they're undersized because of that. So other than that, I think we're very pleased with the condition of the building. Our folks here and Frank, his leadership, he does a great job making sure everything's. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate that. And so we'll now move on to our superintendent.
You guys have got a bunch of information today. I'll just have to admit that. Your heads are probably spinning with all the things that are going on. I, I just want to share some things that, that are coming up and a, and a few items that I've never been part of as part of the district and I thought were really neat, need to be mentioned. Earlier this week, we had a retiree reception. And I didn't know what a retiree reception was, but we had former school district employees of all different types gathered together here in the boardroom and have a reception. And we had probably 25 retirees from all different ages. And we had probably twenty five retirees from all different ages come and gather together and sit at tables and converse about their old times at the the place that they were employed and it was, it was really a really nice experience. I actually saw some of my former teachers, former athletic director, Mr. Brothers was there, Mr. North was there, Mr. Delude was there. So yeah, it was really, it was really nice to see that, but they were very happy people as they were talking about their time here as employees of the district. Anything else to add to that?
I would just add, it's an event that we look forward to every year. A big thank you to Heidi Diner and Jennifer for putting the event together and sincerely, these folks really appreciate the district having everybody back in and they do look forward to getting together. It was fun to talk to all of them.
Yeah, will you remind us of that next year?
I'd love an invite for that.
Will do, I'll make sure.
It was really neat. So we had a community forum last night and you made, Jeff made mention in his presentation, many of the things that we shared were here tonight. Were a part of a community forum that took place last night. We had a few patrons within the crowd here. We also had a few people that joined us via Zoom and all worthwhile and good information. And that was recorded and so that'll be out there for the public to see. Coming up next week's parent conference week, the following week is spring break. We have a board study session scheduled for the thirteenth. That is a seven o'clock in the morning one and that is a principal round table with our secondary school principals. That'll be at the high school conference room library, but I'll get you the details coming up. Also a reminder that cohort number five of our Cecil Equity Training is going on in the district. If any of you would like to participate in that, let me know or directly contact Hunter. That is on April nineteenth and Jeff, do you want to say anything since you have been involved?
I attended the one, it was January, January. Yeah, I attended that, it was, it was an all day session, but I'll tell you what, the day flew by and I'll just get my hat to, there were, there were teacher and administrator presenters, there was data, there was information. But moreover, there was interaction among everybody that was in the room and people that know each other well, that were basically, you know, bearing some very personal information and stories that I went in there with this much understanding about topic and equity and the whole meaning of inclusion and all of that. I walked out of there with this odd view and it was, it was an amazing day. It was unlike any other that I you haven't been to one, you have the time to do it, well worth the day. This is a fabulous job, it will change the way you think about equity and our.
That evening on the nineteenth, we will also host our April community collaboration that will all be about social emotional learning. And just, just on a side note, this topic came to us by, by our parents. This is one of those topics that we didn't, we didn't identify a topic. And so parents communicated with us and they'd learn, like to learn more about what's going on with social emotional learning. That'll be that evening. We do have a board meeting scheduled or regular April board meeting on the twenty seventh. If you can, and if it's something that is of interest to the board, we'd like to take you on a walk on the transportation facility and give you a view of what it looks like. So three thirty that afternoon.
Tell you, it looks nice from the outside, I was right there. I thought it was today.
Oh, well, all right.
Called from there.
Oh, good for you, Jamie. Way to be ahead of it. And I, you probably all know what we, what we are doing right now, but a lot of our work is managing the day to day things, what's going on currently in our school year. But but our mindset is that, but it's really shifted now to preparing ourselves for next year. You can see that by the budget work we're doing, the staffing work we're doing, staffing meetings all the time, trying to move the pieces of the puzzle around, trying to make sure we get to a place where we can hire, hire people. A lot of planning for facility things going on during the summer months of how we can improve our facilities. And then we are waiting on the legislature to provide us some guidance on how next year may look for new legislations that needs to be enacted, budgetary pieces and so forth. And that's starting, I think it was the Senate's, Senate's budget, it was out today. House budget will follow and then they'll battle it out between the two budgets to figure out where we are at the end of the session. That is my report and thank you.
So on that note though, the thing you've mentioned to me, there two legislative topics that are near and dear to Seela's heart that have some traction or still lots of changes going on, but that's transitional kindergarten sped bills.
Correct, yeah, yeah, both of those we've, we've watched and there is some differences within the budget on the sped bills and so we'll see where that falls out. And then we know there's going to be changes to transitional kindergarten, we believe that. It's just a formality now and just get the language in place. We do believe that that is going to be not next year where the changes are going to have to take place, but the following year, yeah.
All right, well, thank you. All right, we've come to that time of the meeting where it's up to, we're up to board communication. So we'll open the floor to fellow board members if you have any.
I'll just say that there's an event that I want to make sure the public's aware of next week, March twenty eighth. The Substance Use Parent Information Night, Seela High School and the ESD one oh five are teaming together at six PM in the Seela High School Library. I know there was concern about this subject recently, including people coming and speaking to the board. And I'm, I'm hoping that those same people are able to come to this event. You know, if it'll be recorded. Okay, okay, but I'm, I'm, I'm excited, glad that we're having this event. There's one going on as we speak at PNWU dealing with fentanyl abuse and misuse. And so I think it's something that has really come to the surface for a lot of people in this, in this valley. And I'm glad the school district is doing their part to make people aware of what what the trends are, as it says here, and also how parents can work with their kids. That's it.
Thank you. All right, any others? I have a couple of to add here to kind of peg on to what Kevin has talked about. There's some additional events coming up for the board. Just want to get everybody's radar and reminders. There is a WASDA regional meeting that's scheduled for to be in Yakima on May eighteenth and I know it's a little ways out, but it would be something for us to decide, I guess, as a group or individually if you can and want to attend. Have not attended one in a while. But we have over the years attended those. Kevin is prepared to go and will go if we want to go. I don't know that we have to answer it today, but because it's only March, but I wanted to just thinking about it, it's May eighteen.
That is one that we would need to register through WASDA and so that the quicker we would know, the quicker we can have Jennifer get you set up for that. But again, it's not right now. Take a look at your calendar, if that's something you have an interest in, then let us know and we'll get you registered.
Well, what, what's the feeling about it? I think it was at five thirty, if I remember. WASDA team that yeah, exchange. All right, let's think about it, I'm not getting anybody jumping up and down about that one. All right, we already covered the SSD equity, that's next November. There's a reminder though, Jamie, we decided as a team that we would, we would hold off the required WASDA equity training until we could do it as a group. And so we've registered, Jennifer registered, all of us for that. It's May eleventh at five thirty. Coincidentally, there, that is also a study session day that we have on our calendar for seven AM. So I'm proposing that we shift our study session time to five thirty and that way we can get the required training out of the way that day and we would not have the study session that morning. We'll send out more information as we get closer, but that's registered, we're in place, we're on the, on the list and that's a virtual thing. I assume we'll have it here, maybe across the hall. All right, more to come on that. Best of the best is on the way, that is an annual, this is the first time it's going to be back in person for a couple of years where we recognize nominated staff in all different classifications, along with retirees and community members, volunteers. Invite them with not only recognition, but rewards. It's May ninth, I believe it's in the afternoon, four o'clock, three, three o'clock. Oh, it is? Oh, it's May ninth placeholder for your nominations, if you choose to nominate someone or do April tenth. Don't get fooled by that, it's April tenth at eight AM. I got stuck last year, submitted one after eight AM and had to call Heidi and pretty pleased with my way through, anyway. That's coming up and that's a great, great event. I, we hope that everybody will be there for that one. Oh, thank you. All right. That's it for me. All right, anybody else? So twenty minutes, twenty two minutes of the ballgame has gone by, however, we got a lot done tonight. Great meeting, everybody, thank you very much. Great dialogue, thanks for everybody for being here, good to see everyone. We'll see you at the next meeting. Oh, I'm so sorry, you're right. All right, we have an executive session, approximately thirty minutes. All right, so we will adjourn the regular public meeting and then move into the executive session. Wow.